To the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Here.
Mrs. Semsi?
Here.
And Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 2nd, 2022?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th, 2022?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Observe.
And Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, before we move into board member reports, I know Angela Lee wanted to do an introduction.
Wayne Brager, who is the chairman of the Madison Joint Recreation District, approached me a few weeks ago about presenting at this board meeting, and a lot has transpired since then in our partnership.
Correct.
We now have a new raffle sponsor as the Madison Joint Recreation District is taking that over for us as we found out about some changes in the law that actually went into effect last year, but nobody even at the Attorney General's office knew about the change. But that doesn't mean once you find out that something is not legal, you don't keep doing it. So we needed to find a 501(c)(3) to partner with, and the Joint Recreation District seemed to be the perfect partner as they support things, recreation throughout Madison, and since the funds are being earmarked towards the athletic complex, where they will help to, you know, the community will be able to make use of it, they were the ideal partner. So we thank you for stepping up, and I know you had other things you wanted to talk about tonight as well.
Thank you. So I prepared this well before all of those things transpired. So I'm just gonna think if you could hand it out to the board.
Sure, I can do that.
And you'll get yours after I'm done, because I didn't make enough copies. Sorry about that. So what I wanted to do as chairman is provide kind of a year-to-date report on what's going on with the REC board. And then as part of that, I also wanted to talk about a memo, a couple of memos actually, that you all should have received a couple of weeks ago, probably, because they work hand-in-hand. So I know I've only got five minutes, so I'm gonna speak a little fast here, and then if you have questions, you can ask. So far in 2022, a couple of highlights. We completed our 12th straight year of successful audits by the state. We're very proud of that. And as was referenced earlier in the year, we finally received our 501(c)(3), so we're very happy with that. Our headquarters, in case you didn't know, it's located in Stanton Park, back by the lake. I was just noticing your view for this meeting, our view is the lake, it's very pretty. You can have your meetings there if you want, just sign it out. But that was a house that was donated by the township, and we've been doing some renovations with that. It's become a big storage place for, for example, the youth basketball league has some stuff there, the Boy Scouts have some stuff there, and some other organizations throughout the community have some stuff that they store there. And then we also open it up for meetings. The soccer league has their meetings there, and a few other organizations, we open up, have their meetings there. The second page gives you an illustration of what we call our event series. What we've done, so a couple of years ago, we had the realization that recreation is not just sports, although the REC board has been tied to youth sports for decades, actually. So we expanded our footprint into other areas, and what you're seeing before you are some of the things that we have now run for either multiple years or maybe our first year. Things like Light of the Park, the REC board is behind, September Fest. We have, for the first year, we did a couple of free movie nights. We did one in the township and one in the village. Mixed reviews on those, but we want to continue doing that. We also, I don't know if you knew, but there's been a summer, an annual Madison Summer Volleyball Classic that's been going on for a couple of decades here in Madison. Not a lot of people know about it. But there's been a lot of influx of people that come from outside of Madison to participate in this thing. It was going to be retired last year, and we, once we kind of stumbled into it, and said, "Let's not retire it, let's build it, and let's even promote it to people in Madison and see what we can get." So those are just some of the things that happened over the summer that we do. What's not on there are things like our Christmas in the Village Park, which I'm sure all of you guys are familiar with. We're taking that expansion of our footprint in recreation into the arts, too. We've been talking to Rabbit Run, and we're looking at doing some things to support Rabbit Run also. So looking forward, I have three points there, and they're kind of related. The first, the first point is tied to the memos that were sent a few weeks ago out to you guys, and hopefully you got a chance to see it. Right now, as constituted by the three governing bodies, the school district, the village, and the township, we have 12 seats on the REC board. That makes us one of the largest boards in the state of Ohio. Three from schools, three from township, three from the village, and then three from our, three at-large seats, which are voted on from those nine members, and then we add three more, so that's 12. That's not practical. And as you know, it's hard to get people to volunteer to do things. It's hard to get good people to volunteer to do things. We've been operating between eight and 10 people for the last couple of years. It's in part because we don't just want to put anybody on board. We want people that are committed to this community, committed to children. So you don't want to just take anybody. Also, the fact that it's 12 people is just a lot. And so what we are proposing, and I had this presentation to the township last week, they're on board, but what we'd like to do is propose a resolution to all three governing bodies because the three of you guys are who made us up back in the late 2000s to change that requirement from having 12 members down to eight. Basically taking one seat away from each entity and one at-large seat away. So that's step one. I think that's a fairly simple step. The second step, which was the second memo that I sent out to you guys, will take a little more planning, but we got a lot of support when we just kind of asked people, "What do you think about this?" What we'd like to do is add one seat back. But we want to dedicate that seat to a high school student. We'd like to make it a two-year program, junior, senior year. They have to be a resident, and they have to be attending Madison High School. But we think it would be a great experience for that student. They'd have to apply to get the seat. So, you know, there's some of that, filling out an application and all that kind of stuff. They'd have to interview for the position. So that's to start. Then, once we would pick a trustee seat for that person, and I don't know what we'll call it or whatever, but we would have that person attend, we have 10 meetings a year. We have that person attend the meetings, we have that person, they would have all the responsibilities of trustee, you know, give their input, participate in some of our events, help plan. There's a philanthropic piece of this. There's a political piece of this. Instead of me coming and doing this presentation, maybe we have that person do a presentation to one of the entities throughout the year. We just think it would be a great experience for that person. We think it would be a great resume builder for that person for wherever they plan on doing after school. We think it would also be great for them financially because we would like to tie then a grant to that where they would get something like, and I think I said $250 per year. So they would get $500 in the grant that they could use for whatever they wanted to use. They go to college, they provide books, and they'd be able to pay that. Or, you know, they could use it to fill up their gas, you know, gas tank, or whatever. So we also would want to work with you guys, and I don't know, Brady or whoever you think is appropriate, to put this program together and document. And I'm giving you a high level, this is what we've been throwing around. We're 100% on board with it, with the REC board, and we just think it'd be great to strengthen the connection that we're supposed to have with the school system. So if you guys are amenable to that, then we would have legislative resolution put together for all three entities. Right now, we got the township on board, and I'll be seeing the village next week. But we'd have mirroring legislation to get that thing going. I don't know that that would happen this school year. I think that if we want to do it right, let's plan it out and make sure it works, and then we can introduce it and advertise it for next school year. Because that's part of two, is getting the word out to the students that, hey, here's this opportunity if you're interested in it. So that leads into my last part, which is, I made the comment at one of our last couple of meetings that in five years, I don't think anybody that's currently on the REC board is going to be on the REC board. I think, well, I know Dregas and I have been on it for 12 years, I think. Terry Wagner is the senior member, she's been on there for 13 or 14 years. But none of these things are designed to be a lifetime commitment, right? You do what you can, you make it a little better, and you move on. So to that, none of us want to leave the REC board unfinished, we'll say it like that, at least in our mind. So we've solicited Judge Richard Collins, and he has agreed to work with us. As a matter of fact, he worked the original legislation back when the REC board was first formed. So he has personal interest in this, too. And he's going to work with us. Our last two meetings are going to be workshops. They're planning meetings anyway for the following year. And we're going to put together a master plan, a three- and five-year master plan. I don't know how long it's going to be. We're going to put that together, and I'd like to be able to incorporate this idea of this seat for a Madison High School student, most heart of that plan. So that's my update. Hopefully I didn't take too much more than a minute, but I would be curious what you guys think.
You missed the Kiwanis, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
We did, I missed the Kiwanis, huh? So, oh yeah, I just, I did jump over that, I apologize for that. So we have decided to join with the, join the Kiwanis organization. We're not merging, we've just, we're members of the Kiwanis now. And the reason that we decided to do that is the Kiwanis and the REC board have similar goals, similar marks that they're trying to meet. And we found out that they're doing some marketing fundraising events that are very similar to ours with the same kinds of goals. So we've been in a couple of their meetings, and I've been talking a lot with Devin. They helped out at September Fest and at Light of the Park. And we just thought, you know, instead of us, here's, let me break it down for you. Instead of the Kiwanis going to Jack's Pools and Spas and asking for some help to do some things, and then next week, the REC board coming to Jack's Pools and Spas and asking for help to do things, we thought, you know, maybe we can join forces on a couple of things, just a couple to start, and see if we work together jointly, we can produce something that's even bigger and better than what we do separately. So that's what that's about. We're a part of them, I've attended a meeting, Terry has attended some meetings, I've been talking with Devin, and we're looking at potentially putting some things together in a joint fashion that would just benefit the community in all. So thank you for catching that.
Comments, questions?
Sounds like you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, we found out that a lot of people now, especially in my 12 years, when I first started, a lot of people didn't even know about the REC board existed. More people know that the REC board exists, at least. But a lot of people don't know, for example, why Light of the Park happens because the REC board is pushing that through. And September Fest is an event, but it's also a fundraiser, like the golf outing that we put up to, on to, to help. Somebody's got to pay for those fireworks, right? Somebody does. Someone's got to pay for the free stuff we give away at Christmas in the Village Park. And so we think that we do ourselves a disservice. All this time, we've been in the background, just kind of doing stuff. And we think that we do ourselves a little bit of a disservice when we don't let people know that, hey, this is happening because the REC board is behind it, you know? So things like this, things can happen more often.
I am thoroughly surprised to find out that we had an annual summer volleyball classic. I had no idea.
Right.
I know we have the Madison Soccer Tournament that happens every September,
Fall, right.
but I had no idea that we had a volleyball tournament.
Let alone it's 20-plus years that it's been going on.
How many, like, how many people are we talking, come to this?
They have, it's down by the baseball field, by the lake, and it's, they, I want to say they peaked at around 20 teams of a minimum of four, and then all the people that comes.
Sure, 20 teams is pretty big.
Last year, I think they had 18, and they thought that that was going to be the last year. We took it on in transition. We had 12, but it was kind of a transition that people really didn't know, and we actually had a couple of teams back out. We actually did, all the way up until we found out that they weren't allowed, we had the girls volleyball team from Madison High School was going to participate, but they had already started practices, and so they couldn't, and so they couldn't do it. Right, rules, rules, rules. Yeah, so there's a lot of things going on, and we feel we need to do a better job promoting it, or in some cases like this, we just got to start.
Yeah.
Yeah, make it even bigger and better than it already is.
Yeah, and you know, and I knew that you guys are putting on The Goonies, and I really wanted to go see that movie, because you know what? I have never seen The Goonies. At my age, I have never seen The Goonies.
I'm a good tutor.
I don't know.
So movie night, the movie night at the township, we actually had some people bring, they brought their couch coffee table, and they set up shot, it was awesome. So we had over 100, over 100 people.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, really good.
That's very good.
As a matter of fact, at some point, we'll be coming to you, because we did it in township and village, their facilities. We were thinking, maybe we do it, you know, on campus somewhere, you know? So there have been a lot of requests for, you know, we were thinking, okay, first time, we'll do family-oriented, you know, kind of things, but we've had a lot of requests for Jaws next year, so.
On the beach, so people can float in the lake, on in their rafts while they're watching. You know, and that's what, something I just thought of, is, you know, we live right on the lake. Have you guys thought about anything that incorporates the lake? We have this great resource, and it seems like we never. Yeah, we never use it. I mean, you see, you go down to the township park, you see a few people here and there. But it's not like when you go to Fairport or even Geneva, you know, you see lots of people, like, we really don't use it very much.
Over the years, the township, and actually the REC board made a couple of donations via Light of the Park a few years ago to restore that, so that people can go down there. And I agree, I think it is underutilized, put it off like this. So any other questions? Okay. So I would like to hear back from you guys, though, about that idea, you know, something that we could move forward with trying to see if we can something together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody wishing to give a report tonight? All right, we don't have anyone registered for public participation. So we're onto reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. Tonight, and it should be in the appendix, is the permanent appropriations for this upcoming fiscal year that we recently completed. So this gets submitted to the Lake County Auditor, I'll submit it tomorrow. And this is just saying that what we have appropriated for each of these funds comes under what's the cash available, and so that's what the Lake County Auditor needs to have at the beginning of the fiscal year and at the end of the fiscal year. So I'd like to recommend the approval of the permanent appropriations for fiscal year '23 is found in Appendix A.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and next, I would like to recommend the approval of the following then-and-nows for August and September.
I'm sorry, the following.
A then-and-now certificate.
Oh, I see it, yes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We had to put one then-and-now separate because Mr. Harbaugh will need to abstain from this one. But I would like to recommend the approval of the below then-and-now certificate.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Observe.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. And I would also like to recommend the approval of the financial reports for all funds and the check payment register for August of 2022.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, I'd like to recommend the acceptance of the following donations, starting with the Madison Family Restaurant and ending with the Madison Family Restaurant as well.
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion? Thank you very much for all these generous donations.
Yeah, because they are donations, and really, you know, our community's always been very generous with us, it's okay if we just go ahead and just briefly, not list what they gave or anything, just briefly list, you know?
And I can read it, yeah. I can read them off, that's okay, yeah. And so we received $250 from the Madison Family Restaurant to the Madison Middle School to be used as needed for the Angels account. This is an account for students that need assistance for their student meals. We also received a generous donation of lumber from Brother Lumber to Madison High School for the ecology club to be used for garden bed project. A generous donation of an electric drum set from an anonymous donor to be used for Madison High School band practice. A generous donation of $500 from North Post Optical to Madison High School Ecology Club to be used for the purchase of denovul. A generous donation of filled backpacks from VFW Coast 112 North Elementary School to be used as needed. A generous donation of free meal certificates from Mike and Jen Willis to East to South Elementary School to be used as staff recognition. A generous donation of $250 from South Madison Marathon to Madison Middle School Volleyball to be used as needed. A generous donation of $500 from, I hope I don't mispronounce this, Pure Use Americas to Madison High School Boys Soccer to be used as needed. A generous donation of $250 from Randall Exterior Construction LLC to Madison Middle School to be used for streak of the month. A generous donation of $100 from Lindsay John Photography to Madison Middle School to be used for Angel accounts for student meals. A generous donation of $100 from Cory Baker to Madison Middle School to be used for Angels accounts for student meals. A generous donation of school supplies from Madison Class of 1972 to Madison Middle School to be used as needed. And finally, a generous donation of $250 from Madison Family Restaurant to North Elementary School to be used for streak rewards.
I have one question, which, first, I want to echo what you said, thank you so very much for everyone who made these donations to us, thank you very much. Is Madison Middle School the only school that has the Angels account set up?
No, I believe it goes to all the schools, because we did have one for another school that, another elementary school today.
Okay, so when they donate, it's just going into a overall account, or it goes into specific accounts for specific schools?
It goes into an overall account, and then.
And we pull from it as needed.
And then they reckon that they can figure out which students would need the money.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have a lot of students that are needing this?
Well, I think part of it is, a lot of people got used to having free lunch, and I know there's something in the legislature, I think they're talking about it at congressional level as well, to try and reinstate some of that, but as of right now, it's not reinstated. So all students, you know, for the past two years had it for free, and so people aren't filling out their applications, and all we can do is post, we can't encourage, you know? We, all we can do is post. We can send it out, remind people to do it, you know, put it in updates, if you, you know, qualify, please do that, because that impacts also other funding that we get. Our Title I funds are tied to how many applications we have, and those types of things. So it's very important that if somebody qualifies for free or reduced lunch, they need to fill out that paperwork. And then there's just people that they don't, you know, have the money on hand, so we help to make sure kids do not go hungry, you know? I will never, ever, you know, promote the idea that we're not going to give kids a full lunch. I don't agree with that. They get the lunch that they need, and they won't figure out how to be prepared. An adult problem should not be a kid problem.
Definitely not.
All right, I think we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mrs. Semsi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else for you tonight, Sarah?
I don't have a sound.
Thank you. Of course, we'll straighten the team.
Several things tonight. First, I want to give a quick update on the track repair that is going to begin this week. They're going to start filling some of those holes, then they'll start next week, and this is all weather-dependent, but we're right on track for where we should be, hopefully, except I think it's supposed to rain. And this is all weather dependent, but we're right on track for where we should be, hopefully, except I think it's supposed to rain tomorrow. It'll just be cold on the weekend or Thursday, Friday. Um, they'll do the track repairs, they will do the resurfacing piece that they're gonna do. And then, um, sometime in October, they will redo the lines. So, we should have this all wrapped up by the middle of October and fixtures all over the place of, I'll put it in books, so. Um, and again, wanna, you know, thank that anonymous donor out there that helped to make this happen. It's not a permanent fix, um, but this gives us time until we can come up with the funds for a permanent fix.
Which leaves me to my next question. Um, the people that are doing these repairs, did they indicate how long we have that these will last?
Three to five years. Three to five years.
So we should really plan on three, not five?
Well, depends on the weather and how...
Well, this is northeast Ohio, so we should probably plan on three.
We assess it every year, you know, Angel.
Right, yeah. Yeah. We will definitely be, you know, looking at what that looks like and assessing. Um, so, but it's underway, so that's a good thing. Uh, I do wanna mention too that the pump in the village has a, uh, pump that they're donating to Madison Schools. Um, they didn't even tell me about it this year, I just happened to find out on one of the many times I fill up. Uh, that if you use the first pump closest to the...
Oh, 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 true north for gas. A portion of your gas will go towards us. I wasn't quite sure where you were going with that.
Yeah, Shell gas. Yeah, I didn't either until I filled up.
Yeah, which pump is that?
It's the closest to the veteran, veterinary one.
And it does say on it Madison Schools? Okay, great.
Either side will work.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a matter of what time you fill the gas to, to fill up.
No, are they doing that for a specified amount?
Kind of middle of October, I think it's like October 20th or something, so another month. Um. Change is tough sometimes, I'm gonna give you a quick update, I want to expect next month on your agenda. Uh, we are transitioning to Board Docs. Sarah graciously tried to get it to work so that we could, you know, preview it this week. Uh, it just wasn't cooperating with Susan as she's learning it, um, today. So I said, just go back to the old agenda format until, um, you know, you're comfortable with maneuvering in the system. But it will look totally different, where it will be posted will be totally different. We will probably put a link to Board Docs, um, until people get used to going to the site where we keep policies. You will now see either policies or agendas and meetings, um, when we go live and that will be next month. Uh, and it will look very different. Uh, the packets will be a little thicker, um, because each section will have a full heading, what it is, if it's procedural, if it's actually recommendations. Um, so, uh, we will give you some previews to look at.
What's driving the change?
Uh, then it'll be easier to put an agenda together, because right now, the agenda...
And they don't see it too. I mean, it's, and they can see all the historical...
Oh, that's cool. More transparency.
And the YouTube link, can you go on there?
So, once it goes live, and what will happen is that it won't fall on just one person ultimately to put everything in. Right now, there's multiple steps in the process. Susan has to get motions from whoever's putting them on, like John will put all the athletic stuff together and she has to go type that in. Sarah's got all the, you know, donations or anything Sarah has. And so if you get it, if you look at the appendix, that was created, was that created in Board Docs or?
I know, that was separate, but anything that's like an attachment that anyone has, you can just, you know, hit edit and go in and, you know, just drag it in there and it'll, it'll be there, so it's a lot less...
So everybody's responsible for their own parts. In other words, they can all just, it's a live document.
And it's nice, it's nice just to view historical meetings and...
So, yeah, it is, it's exciting, it'll take a little bit to get used to, but it's something that I, you know, talked about with Mike previously and we just... For whatever reason, there wasn't that comfort level, so, um... But Sarah's all about the technology and she's been teaching me, so that's it. Uh, I wanna spend a little bit of time talking about the report card tonight. Um, it has a new look, but I also wanna dispel a myth that's out there. Because the report card has changed so many times in the last 10 to 12 years. You know, we were continuous, we used a level of, you know, excellent, excellent with distinction, continuous improvement. Then we went to the letter grades and now we're going to stars. Um, the media doesn't know how to handle that or to quantify it, so they come up with their own quantify. Um, you know, for years, they loved that performance index and that's how they would rank schools, based on that indicator alone. Well, now they, you know, the performance index is our method of achievement, but they took all the different categories and gave points for each of the stars. And they counted up how many stars you had and ranked you according to total number of stars. When they go to give us an overall rating, that's not even how it's gonna be weighted next year. And I haven't dug into next year, cause I'm unpacking this past year. So, but I'll give you a quick overview, um, of the areas. So, the first is achievement and that is, uh, solely rated now on the performance index. Um, so it's the level of performance. So, where it helps in a lot of ways is when you had students that didn't, that weren't proficient, you didn't get any credit for them in, uh, part of the old achievement model, using if they were proficient or above. And you met that eight percent threshold. Now, unless you don't take a test, you get points for every level of performance. So, and they even have, um, an advanced plus. So, an advanced plus is probably scoring perfect on the test. And then you go to advanced and then you get so many points for that. Um, points for accomplished, proficient, basic and limited. So even kids that are still, you know, not achieving where they need to be, but they at least took the test, got some points, figure into that performance index. And I'm, I'm just giving a 30,000 foot view of this. Um, so achievement is big one and progress is the other one. And that's, the progress component measures the academic performance of students compared to expected growth for Ohio's test. And they do it in all the grade levels and then they look at the total number of scores and how they weight that and use some of the value added data. And so I'm still unpacking that one a little bit, because that was one of our low areas. But we did very well in some areas and then we had some levels that we've gotta look at and see what happened and why that could be. Um, gap closing, we met our, or exceeded the state standards in that area and that's in looking at all our subgroups and how well they perform. Um, graduation, we met the standard, it's not where I want it to be. Um, especially, and the graduation rate is always a year behind the report card here. So this was the class of, um, 1920, yeah, 21, yeah, that figured into it, 21, 22, no. Yeah, 2021 is this one. I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, I was, I was looking at, it said 1920 on my special editor.
Uh, but the, uh, students that graduated in five years then was much higher than the four-year graduation rate. And so that helped us to meet the, um, expect, to meet the standard in graduation rates, because they look at the four and five-year cohort. Early literacy, that was, um, should've been much higher, as we had a data reporting error with change in staff. Um, last year, we had a new EMIS coordinator and so some data did not get reported the way it should be. And it's no fault of anybody's, but it got overlooked in all the ways we were going to guide into the report card. You could spend five hours, six hours looking at every slide, trying to understand all the data that goes into it. Um, and then, not rated this year, they're bringing back the readiness indicator, but I think it's looking a little different than it did in the past. So this is your college, career, workforce and military readiness. And so that will come back next year. And then that will be all of the, um, different groups that will measure into that final rating. But there is no adding up the number of stars for overall.
Overall.
It doesn't work that way, they're gonna weight them different categories. That makes sense.
Uh, Emma, so you're talking about the Plain Dealer article. Um, if, if you guys haven't seen it, did everyone see it already? Well, the Plain Dealer looks at the, um, state report cards and then them themselves then take that information and rank them one through, what, 608 or something like that? The state does not do the ranking, the Plain Dealer reporter does the ranking. So, um, it's, it, it really is not a reflection, a true reflection on us.
No, that's how they just add it up and rank, create some way to rank. Cause they can't just let intelligent people draw conclusions for themselves.
So is there gonna be like a conclusion to what the data means or?
Um, well, they're... Clarify your question.
Well, no, so like if someone walks up and says, okay, how's Madison doing, they can look at it and say, okay, I see.
Well, it's just the stars right now and they have to look at each one of these measures. Next year, there will be an overall rating. So, they'll take this and achievement and I think it's progress weight more than the other three or four areas and that'll impact...
And will it narrow it down by school to try to...
Yes, we do narrow it down by school. They can do that right now, they can check into each school.
So like north, south, middle?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. What is that? I thought I had one there. But, uh, I do wanna just mention transportation, we still have a driver shortage out there, that's not, we're not the only district in the, uh, state of Ohio that has that problem. Um, transportation companies are trying to make it lucrative for people to become school bus drivers. Uh, if you know somebody that wants to be a school bus driver, they can apply at CBS. Uh, go into the bus garage lot and fill out an application and, um, talk to Kim Bobbs, who is the supervisor there and, you know... Hopefully, we can get something going. And I'm gonna turn that over today to talk about...
They will put you through the CDL training as well, so, um, sponsor you through that and help you get your bus driver endorsement, but you'll have a CDL license as well. Um, and that does take time, so when we get new applicants, um, they come on as bus aides and ride the bus while they're going through the training until they earn their CDL and their, and their bus driver endorsement. So, it's not like you can, unless you find somebody with the CDL, um, you're pretty much hiring somebody and waiting several months before you're able to, to get them driving on the road. So that's one of the challenges. But, you know, like so many other places, we are struggling to find people, uh, to do some of the jobs. Thankfully, we're, we're almost 100% staff in our, in our regular positions, but where we're really struggling are substitutes. Uh, we currently have about a 75% fill rate, so anytime somebody is, is out, um, you know, there's a three out of four chance that we'll have somebody to cover for you. Otherwise, it may be a principal jumping into cover, it may be teachers on their planned time. I was over at the middle school last week, um, and, and for a couple periods. So it's, it's whoever they can get to, to get covered, it's, it's a challenge. The good news is, and there's very few subs available across the county, um... The state, you know, last year started the temporary substitute license, the educational requirements as a high school diploma. And that was extended for this year and for next year. And if anybody knows people who are interested in getting that teaching experience, they can come and see me. Uh, they'll need to, um, they'll need to kinda go through a screener with me. They will apply, do the online application, uh, through the state of Ohio. They have to get a BCI and FBI fingerprint done and, um, then they will, uh... And, and there's a cost to those, $25 for to apply for the license and $47 here in this office for, for the fingerprinting. Um, but at that point, they can apply for their one-year substitute license and, um, and come and work for us. And, and we hope that, we have a number of people who have taken advantage of that and we're always looking for more. It's kind of a cool opportunity, because when are you gonna get the chance to come in and experience teaching a class? You make your own schedule, you can accept the job for the day or, or turn it down if you wanna go do something on your own on a, on a Friday. Um, work the same hours as your kids, can you tell them doing a sales job?
I've had opportunities.
So it is, yeah, there's an opportunity to try something you've never done before and, um, so we have a lot of people coming in and, and of all different ages as well, so.
Well, and we've partnered to, I mean, you know, trying to tap into local universities like Gary, in teacher prep programs. Cause now you can do this, it's a good way to see, do I really want to do this as a career? Uh, the teacher shortage is coming, um, they anticipate over 5,000 retirements and right now, in the pipeline in the state of Ohio, there's only 2,500 students. And that's all four years. I'm sure Gretchen has probably heard that from OEA, you know, um, the last couple of years. I mean, there's shortages in all areas of business and all the different sectors, but people have decided they don't want to be teachers. And there are universities closing down teacher prep programs.
Teachers and nurses, there's shortage of nurses too.
Oh yeah, there is a shortage of nurses, I can tell you all about what I've experienced in the last month.
I participated in a mock interview session with, um, students from Lake Erie College last year. And, um, this was probably March or so and all of them had job offers for the following year. So, you know, um, as we, and we, we do have a, a number of student teachers who come and work for us. And we're always, you know, evaluating how that's going and, um, what positions we may have open for them for, for the following year, so. It's definitely, uh...
Challenging.
Yeah, definitely a challenge, so.
John, do you have anything to say?
I do.
All right.
All right. Um, so I have, uh, very exciting news. One of our students who participates in Project Unify is on the homecoming court. So, um, that's very exciting. Um, three years ago, I believe, we had, um, one of our, of other Project Unify students become queen. So, um, so we'll see, so that was, um, really exciting, so he's very happy. Um, I've been working, uh, last year, we all worked on, the last couple of years, we've been working on curriculum, um, for, um, literacy and that. And so, uh, special education hasn't really had a unified curriculum for our units and our students that really struggle, um, the most that we have to, um, uh, work with. And so, this, uh, last year, I've been working with some of my colleagues in other districts. Um, some of the teachers that we hired this year, two of them had some, um, experience. And so, um, we purchased, um, our first universal pre-K to 12, um, uh, curriculum, which is, it's called, um, Unique Learning System. And it's a really great, interactive, research-based, easily differentiated, um, it ties to Gen Ed, uh, standards and it's a lot of, um, visuals. But the piece that I like the most about it is that it will give us a continuous piece of progress monitoring. So, that's not like anything that we have, like with our infinite campus. So this is going to be a really, really great place for our students to, that we can really see that progress. So I'm super, um, excited about that. And, um, also there, um, because of our increase in some of our, um, students, many of our students, one of our biggest increases is autism and I've been talking about that. So, um, we're sending six of our, uh, unit teachers to, um, it's an evidence-based intervention, uh, method, methodology. It's called, it's, it sort of, there's something called the teach method, um, which is very costly and it's a great program. So this is kind of a little bit less costly, but it's a two-day program, um, that is also going to help any of, um, those teachers, you know, not just specifically with autism. So, um, I'm really trying to give as much support as I can to, um, the teachers and, um, aides. And so, uh, we also have, um, we have some help, um, that we partner with the ESC and she has... And she has, she's going to work with me two days a week and throughout the district. Trying to really come in and focus on how our units function, how we have our special education. And so really, it'll be a great support as we look at some of the areas that we need to improve on. Also got partnering with the ESC, the tutoring that they offered at Hale Road. Last year is continuing this year. So we had passed that information out to our students. We also have, starting in October, our Family Pride, we're partnering with Family Pride, which partnered with the ESC. These are all free. There were a lot of grants that the ESC really went after this year. And so we have groups that are going to be starting that our teacher recommended that are based on a weekly group and working with a counselor on positive peer interactions. And there's different topics that we talked about. So that's going to be starting.
Is that weekly group is through Family Pride?
Mm-hmm. Oh, God, that is. Yes, yeah.
This is part of that, that's one of them.
Yeah, they have, we also still have Crossroads. So they have, and they have other programs. But this was something that Family Pride, it was grant-based.
There's some good things about them.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, and it's a targeted, it's a specific, there's, it's going to be in every, our district was able to get every building. So each of the buildings. And we really wanted to keep it like eight students. And so it'll be a small group once a week. So we're really hoping to support our kids that way. So that's all I have.
I did remember before I go into the recommendations, the one lesson I wanted to talk about was the Good News Newsletter. We did restructure that a little bit. And we are looking at, you know, using this as a communication tool to talk about various things. So the first thing is always going to be a staff department type profile piece. And our first one was introducing Sarah to the community again. Another one is a program, that is something that's happening district-wide as far as programming. And PBIS was a good place to start. And then a building level article about something happening in the buildings. And that, this time was at the pre-K. So we were, that's how we're going to structure our bi-weekly newsletters for the rest of the year. And I think it will be more consistent. It will have a whole different look of messaging than what we've previously done. So I'm excited that it will die and so is proper activity. All right, are we ready for the recommendations? Personal motion tonight, we're asking you to accept the resignation of Wendy Woodworth, Assistant for Treasure, effective 7th, September 7, 2022. We're asking you to enter into following employment contracts. To approve change, replacement on teacher salary schedule, beginning with Shelby Seibert and ending with Teresa Jocelyn. We're asking you to approve the one substitute teacher that we have right now, Ken Ankrum, to employ Steve Robertson as an education assistant playground at North. To employ Rachel Hicks as a nutrition cash, services cashier at North Elementary. To employ Alicia Sensi as nutrition services cashier at South Elementary. To employ Jennifer Millar as a nutrition services cashier at Madison Middle School. And to employ Michelle Schultz as a nutrition services cashier at Madison Middle School. We're asking you to approve the following transfer. Joanna Slattery from a three-hour position, nutrition services cashier, to a six-and-a-half hour position as a special needs assistant autism at South Elementary. We're asking you to amend the one-year supplemental contract of Emily Brown, NHS National Honor Society advisor, to reflect her years of experience. And we're asking you to rescind the personal service contract for Paul Gatski, NHS Drama Assistant Tech Director. And we're asking you to approve, oh, that was the end of that one.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Next item is to approve the early graduation request of the following students to graduate with the class of 2023 in accordance with our board policy. And that would be Liam Aiken, Abigail Blitzer, and Isabella Parsons. Come in.
One second.
Any discussion?
They graduating one year ahead. Congratulations to them.
Roll call?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horbeck?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we're asking you to rescind the resolution authorizing the teacher to take title to a vehicle on behalf of the board and to have it insured until it is raffled pursuant to the fundraiser under Board Motion 139-22.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Now, do we have, do we have the car or is it somewhere?
We don't have the car. It is still a classic. It's still titled to classic. Once all of these things are done, I think Dwayne next week is going to meet with them and transfer title to the rec board.
And maybe we can get it to one of the last couple of football games or something?
That's what we're going to be working on.
So do we start like?
Oh, you got keys.
Parade wave, he drives by.
So like the coordination of like selling it, selling tickets at games and stuff, that we?
Because they have a 12-person corner next to the extent of their volunteer pool, we have many people that will step forward through all of our, you know, networks to sell tickets on behalf of the rec board.
The rec board volunteer pool is growing exponentially.
And Dave is going to become that coordinator of volunteers to make sure.
Another head.
At events.
Home games, I can sell. My granddaughter loves selling the tickets. She's quite the sale person. Told everybody there's free ice cream on the back.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, the link is live. Again, it's the same link that people bought from before. So that, that's up and running. We just have to promote that the link is live. They've got all the money moving to the rec board, so that's, that's good.
Which will be a special account just for this.
I think, I think Dwayne should drive all of our female homecoming attendees slowly around the track.
When is homecoming?
On the vehicle. We'll show. You still have our, you still have, and you'll have our attendees waiting. Everyone will be there watching.
Actually, I think that's not a bad marketing idea to have that.
You know, leading the parade or whatever.
I didn't, that, not that part necessarily, but definitely to have that thing out there so people are there.
And that is exactly what we want.
All right, so anyone who's already bought a ticket online or in person, those tickets are good.
They are good.
To win the same car we were talking about.
Yep.
Your tickets are good.
Do we know what color it's in? Yes.
Blue.
It's blue.
Some white light and all sorts.
All right, I think we're at roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and on the consent calendar, we have just several agreements tonight. Versus to approve an agreement between Madison Local Schools and Auger Career Center to obtain field observation experiences for students in the Madison Local School District for the school year. To approve the contract between the Madison Local School District and Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the services of one interpreter and one gifted coordinator for this school year. To approve the contract between Madison Local School District and the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for audiology and hearing impaired services for this school year. To approve a trip for Madison High School baseball to the town Cal Ripken Camp in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, from March 27th to 30th, at a cost of $600 per player. And the students pay for that or fundraise for it. To approve a trip for Madison High School boys' basketball to Newark High School in Newark, New Jersey, for a tournament from December 28th, 29th, at no cost to the players. To approve a trip for the Madison High School wrestlers of Heat Brown, Ohio, from December 2nd to 3rd, 22. A trip to Elias, Ohio, from January 13th to 14th. And a trip to Oregon, Ohio, from January 27th to 28th, 23, at no cost to the athletes. Again, they fundraise for those dollars and it's no cost to the school.
All right, so the trip to Newark, New Jersey is also, it says no cost to players, but it's not paid by us. It's paid by fundraising. Okay.
Or their booster group, yes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Does the baseball have like a fundraising group? Like, you know, I know basketball and then football, does the baseball team have something like that too?
They do a lot of fundraising. I think BJ, the coach, does a lot of work with the players and does a lot of fundraising on his own. But he doesn't have a booster group, I don't think.
Roll call?
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horbeck?
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have a need for a quick. Your motion for adjournment?
Can I ask you a question? I didn't notice he's out of, but I didn't remember, I didn't realize that there was only one.
Public participation.
Yeah. Can I borrow something from you guys? If possible. Okay. I just wanted to give this to you guys. Just take a look at those. I, I think we are missing out on a large opportunity here. It's always about getting support from the community. And this, this is brought to my attention actually from two people that live in Square Acres where I live. One has children in the school system and one doesn't. The one that doesn't, for the last couple of years, she's attended all of Zoe's theater performances and things like that. And the Madison calendar goes out to everybody. Absolutely everybody. When you look at the two, just in comparison, the only thing that's in the Madison calendar are times off.
What do you mean, on the, on the calendar itself?
On the calendar itself. Now, my wife happens to work at Perry's. And so she gets that automatically. And when you compare them, there's things like football games, theater events and concerts all through the school. SAT, pre-test, practice tests, all, even board meetings listed in there. But when you look at that, there's nothing. And the point that the lady who lives across the street from me made, who doesn't have kids in the system, was I get this and I see nothing. And quite frankly, I enjoy going to the musicals when Zoe's at. I'd probably would like to go to a few more, but I don't even know when they are. So I just think that we might be missing an opportunity to reach this community and connect to the community by something as simple as just putting things out.
We did put the dates on there in the past and we went to COVID because we didn't know one thing was going to happen. Because of COVID, we cut those out and then we just linked everything to the webpage. But we can bring that back, that's not a problem. It's just, we have the space because you also look at.
I know, it's a lot bigger.
Well, our, we used to have a list of them, like, you know, October and above, it would list what her dates were.
Yeah, like a little, like a little schedule thing.
Like a table of contents.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's easily brought back now that we're back to a more normal.
So I just, I, I quite honestly, I don't even pay attention to it. Alex takes it and, you know, puts stuff in there. But it was interesting to me that my neighbor, and then a second neighbor that has kids in there, they, they brought that up to.
Because we do, we do put that in the calendar, that these dates are listed online. And they are all there. But for people that don't want to do that and they just want that calendar, we can bring that back.
Yeah.
Well, or, you know, I had a problem the other day with online. I couldn't buy Riverside tickets online. I had to go to Riverside's website to buy them online. They were not appearing on our website.
Well, I don't, I don't know what. I got to, I'll have to ask them that one. I'm not in charge of the advertising.
But why can't we do it?
Uh, because we get this for free.
No, 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 but I mean, we can do fundraising and stuff and do a bigger one.
Yeah, I mean, that one.
I want to be bigger than Perry's.
Because I don't like to, no, I, yeah, but I, we have a lot of advertising in.
We have a lot of. No, but we can, I mean, we can, we can do that.
And if we do that.
I, I think you should look at bringing that stuff back.
And that could be great because you can still theme it and you can still do all the things because we worked really hard on the theme this year, so.
It's big and fancy, for sure.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, me personally, I don't need all that. I mean, it's big and it's glossy and all like that. That's functional. That, that work, I mean, it's just going to go on the, on the fridge, right?
Yeah, that would take up too much space.
Right, right, exactly. So, but I think that, that you would, since that goes out to everybody, that's an old, a golden opportunity.
And then there's people that tell us that we should send them a new calendar, you know? So there, there is that explained.
Right. So thank you for letting me. No, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
I didn't want to take away from my rec board hat, that's why I have it up there.
I don't think we got it quite as far as waiting for motion for adjournment.
I, I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Horbeck?
Yes.
All right. Are you everybody?